Great chatty bunch this morning.
Okay.
Welcome to the false, how about that? Boy, sixteen years, it dies hard, doesn't it? Bucks County Commissioners Meeting for June 1st, 2022. We're going to begin with the Pledge of the Flag and then we are going to recognize a moment of silence, not only for the tragedy in Texas, but also for the gun violence that is permeating our society, unfortunately, over the past year or so especially. So always rise. Okay, thank you. All right, we have some nice early presentations today. We're going to begin with the Teacher of the Year Award. And Commissioner Deidre Allo has a proclamation to read.
Yes, good morning, everyone. I have the pleasure of recognizing Meg Eubank of Hilltown as Teacher of the Year, and I'm going to read the citation. Meg, welcome.
Thank you.
I'm going to read the citation for you. Whereas Meg Eubank of Hilltown has earned the prestigious distinction of being named a 2022 Teachers of English to Speakers of Other Languages Association Teacher of the Year, an award that honors exceptional, exceptional, exceptional English. Language teaching at all levels. I'll have to come and be a student, Meg. As a professor at Bucks County Community College, Ms. Eubank is also earning her doctoral degree at the University of Houston. Ms. Eubank was initially drawn to teaching English as a second language to help build community among students from across the globe. Throughout Ms. Eubank's teaching career and volunteerism, she has taught and assisted several thousand students from more than 100 countries, often dealing with virtual classroom settings and different time zones. Whereas Ms. Eubank is always encouraging her diverse group of students to advocate for themselves and to connect with one another. Now therefore do we, the Board of the Bucks County Commissioners, hereby recognize and congratulate Meg Eubank upon being named a 2022 TESOL Teacher of the Year. In so doing, we commend Ms. Eubank's talents and leadership in conveying English as a second language to students from all over the world. Meg, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
If you'd like to say a few words, I mean, you'd be.
Well, this award, first of all, is incredibly humbling and incredibly exciting. And the reason why I won the award was because during the pandemic, when we switched to virtual teaching, I was teaching students from here in America, but also all over the globe. And a lot of students had to go home to their home countries. And I was teaching, I think it was how many different time zones, I put it somewhere on the slide, like six different time zones or something. So we couldn't have synchronous classes where we were meeting together. And I had to come up with a really creative hybrid teaching situation where we would have discussion boards where we were verbally speaking to each other in recorded bits and having conversations and things like that, and trying to create a really engaging community somehow when we're all scattered across the globe. And somehow it worked and it came together and TESOL recognized me for that work during the pandemic and my work previously as well. So I do a lot of work with nonprofits as well. And on my other slide, I have some current initiatives that are going on. I have to give a nice shout out to Bucks County Community College where I currently work. And we are now enrolling for a summer bridge program, which helps students who are coming out of high school and going into college, and it bridges their college experience. So they can earn some college credit this summer. They can get some support. There's built-in tutoring, built-in workshops, all sorts of great things. So please tell everybody you know about the Summer Bridge. We're enrolling now and it'll start in July. And then I also volunteer for a couple local nonprofits. One is Immigrant Rights Action, based right here in the borough of Doylestown, that helps immigrants with resources as they arrive to this new country. And in a similar vein, The Immigrant Platform, which is an online-based nonprofit that has a website with all sorts of resources and Zoom ESL classes as well for people learning English.
Thank you very much. Please come forward.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So twice a year, we recognize the literary art of poetry. We do a Poet of the Year and then also a High School Poet of the Year. So today we have with us Bucks County High School Poet of the Year, whom I'm going to read a proclamation for. Whereas the County of Bucks and Bucks County Community College annually sponsor a High School Poet of the Year competition. And whereas in 2022 honorary, the 2022 honorary is Lauren Burchell, a junior at Central Bucks High School West. And whereas Lauren was selected from more than 100 Bucks County High School student entries by the judging panel composed of current Bucks County poet laureate Nicole Steinberg and 2020 laureate Jane Edna Moller. And whereas the work submitted by Lauren includes One Fish, Two Fish, Girlfish, Boyfish, Secondary Succession, and An Ode to Celine. And whereas after being a finalist two years in a row, Lauren's selection this year proves that dedication and hard work pays off when you put your mind to it. And whereas Lauren, three student runners-up and three finalists, were honored at a poetry reading and celebration held May 14th. Now therefore do we, the Bucks County Board of Commissioners, hereby recognize Lauren Burchell as the 2022 High School Poet of the Year in the County of Bucks. In doing so, we commend and applaud Lauren's creative gift of poetry and contributions to the literary tradition of our community and wish them the best in their future pursuits. We encourage all Bucks County residents to look to Lauren's poems for insight, enjoyment, and inspiration. And I believe Lauren has a poem for us here before we give the proclamation.
Thank you so much for having me here. I would like to read my poem, one of the poems I submitted, that one for the contest. It's called One Fish, Two Fish, Girlfish, Boyfish. It has four parts. One Fish. Sometimes I wish I'd cut off my hair by my own hand, stuck the soil-colored strands into a used plastic grocery bag, reducing, reusing, recycling. Threw it into a river, let the evidence float away on a current. Maybe the bag will become some unfortunate fish's last supper, but dear God, at least I'd be alive. If all I have to do to survive is second-handedly strangle a fish, then I gladly take on the title of killer. I've already murdered my past self. She's at the bottom of a murky lake now. I haven't been to a lake in years. Two Fish. My mother had three children, braided her iron spirit into our hair. When we were just ripening, she'd take us everywhere, anywhere, just to get out of the house, apples never straying far from the tree. One of our most frequented places was a paradise of a koi pond hidden inside a health center or hospital, or I wasn't particular about that sort of thing a decade ago. We each chose our favorite fish, tried to find them every time. My mother's pointing finger led our eyes to them. My favorite was an inseparable pair, their markings burning softly through the dappled surface of the water. I rarely needed my mother's murmurs to identify them, for their uniqueness was what I wished to copy, something to make me stand out from my sisters. I didn't know then I would grow up to look nothing like them. But lifespans become cramped within the confines of the indoors, and as a shadow fell over the pond, I could not find my pair of fish. I was inconsolable on the inside. The only crack in my facade was a tremble of my lips and a stone in my throat. Within a few seconds, my mother pointed out two beautiful fish, claiming that they were my favorites, child. Did she craft her lie to ease the trouble on my face, or had she never paid enough attention to know the difference? That was the first lie she told me that I did not believe, the first lie that fell apart like a sandcastle built too close to the tide's reaching fingers. Girlfish. There are plenty of girlfish in the sea, but how many girl, sorry, there are plenty of fish in the sea, but how many girlfish are there? How many girlfish are there that like other girlfish that might be boyfish? I cast my line, wait for eternity, reel it in, feel my skin burn and peel under the yellow smudge of the sun. Empty-handed, I change my bait, becoming desperate. I cut off my fingers one by one, hoping they like my ring finger best. Impale the digit with the hook, then cast my line again. Perhaps if I tempt them with the right part of my flesh, they will bite. But the girlfish only steal my bait for themselves. I offer these slices of skin just to be robbed, never learning, always hoping the outcome might change. Girlfish slip out of your hands before you can get a grip, swimming upstream as you are swept into the rushing tide. Never yours to treasure, to admire, though they'll take whatever skin you offer up. Boyfish. I observe boys like they are rare fish, and I'm the most dedicated ichthyologist in the last aquarium left standing. I watch the way they arrange their legs when they sit at desks, only crossed if at the ankle, or wide open, or with an ankle on an opposing knee, and how they position their hands when they're talking, shoved deep into pockets, or clasped at one wrist, or all over me, and how their clothes tumble down their torsos, flatly across their chest to their stomach. And yet I'm the one encased in hollow glass, strangers staring at me like I'm going extinct. The water is pooling around my knees, enticing me to sink like a stone. I am the freak show, I am the exhibit, and my captor is my body.
Okay, we are also taking time today to recognize Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week. Commissioner Marceklin has a proclamation.
Thank you. And whereas the week of June 6th through 10th, 2022, has been proclaimed as Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week throughout the Commonwealth, in recognition of the efforts of child welfare professionals serving the children of Pennsylvania. And whereas every day in Bucks County, local children are at risk of child abuse and neglect, or have been removed from their home due to such abuse and neglect. And whereas the challenging task of investigating child abuse, assessing child safety, delivering services to families and children, and ensuring that the children of Bucks County are nurtured and provided family connections and support, and providing service that allow children to remain safely in their home or return home as expeditiously as possible fall into the hands of child welfare professionals. And whereas the work of child welfare professionals may require them to enter situations in which their personal safety is put at risk, including during the COVID-19 pandemic, throughout which caseworkers continue to conduct investigations and work with families in their homes at considerable risk to their own health. And whereas innumerable injuries and deaths of children have been averted due to the efforts of child welfare professionals. So now therefore do we, the Board of Bucks County Commissioners, hereby proclaim June 6th through 10th, 2022, as Child Welfare Professionals Appreciation Week throughout the County of Bucks. In doing so, we appreciate, we express our gratitude and admiration for the important and difficult work performed every day by our excellent professionals at the Bucks County Children and Youth Social Service Agency, and we thank you.
Thank you. Marge McCune from the Children and Youth Agencies here, Director of Children and Youth.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
And everyone. Thank you so much for this proclamation. It has been an interesting couple of years for our staff to be working in the field with the COVID pandemic and other issues that we've had to deal with, as my deputy director says, murder hornets and COVID and everything else that we've had to deal with in the field. I thank these people. I'm just the director. I hang out in the office. These are the guys that go into the field and they work very hard every day. And we appreciate very much your recognition of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you bring everybody up? Let's do it. Take picture. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Nice job. Thank you.
Our next presentation is from the Conservation District, and it is focused on a major project that is happening at Lake Luxembourg and Core Creek. And it was something that the Gretchen Schatznider, Director of the Conservation District, was really interested in making sure that people were aware of the work that's going to be going on. The lake will look very different for a while this summer. We don't want people panicking and trying to get a good understanding of exactly what work is being done and when it'll start, when it'll hopefully finish and everything else. So Gretchen, thank you.
I think you just gave my presentation.
I saw.
Thank you so much for having me here today. Again, I'm Gretchen Schatznider, District Manager of the Bucks County Conservation District, and I am really pleased to be able to give you a brief summary of an ongoing effort to restore what we have termed the Conservation Pool at Lake Luxembourg, and I'll define that for you a little more. And as Commissioner Harvey mentioned, this project is about to get underway this summer, and it is going to be highly visible from Woodburn Road. And for those people who we know, many people in Bucks County utilize Core Creek and utilize the lake, so there will be, you know, some changes. But we do hope that once the project is complete, everybody recognizes the benefit and the worthwhileness of conducting it. So could you please, thank you. There's a lot on this slide. I apologize, it was animated, but I'm going to walk through it just for orientation's sake. I am sure you all know where Core Creek Park is and Lake Luxembourg, but just for the audience's sake, this is an overview, an aerial of Lake Luxembourg within Core Creek Park in Middletown Township. And then a photo, an inset photo of the Conservation Pool from Woodburn Road. And I'm going to leave those water samples for a moment and just describe a little bit for the audience that Lake Luxembourg was created in 1977. And during the time of its creation, it was thought to be a little added benefit that there's a bit of a constriction point at the crossing of Woodburn Road, which creates kind of a four bay, a natural four bay or settling area for the water. There's a 6,000 acre watershed for Core Creek that drains, 99% of it all drains into the Core Creek and comes down into Lake Luxembourg through one inlet, just in an inset photo in the back. And that water could be very sediment-laid in, whether from natural causes or non-point source pollution, but this Conservation Pool area, this four bay area, created a slowing of the water, and then sediment could drop out into the base of the lake, and then the water body of the rest of the lake would be much improved. At the time, it was estimated that it would take 100 years for the Conservation Pool to reach capacity as far as sediment is concerned. But in reality, due to extreme land use changes of the decades, the Conservation Pool filled with sediment by 1986. So going from an estimate of 100 years to the reality of nine years. And at that time, we decided, or we, the Conservation District at that time, decided that they wanted to take on an effort to improve the Conservation Pool and to work within the watershed to make sure that we could restore this area, improve the water quality within Lake Luxembourg, and also the Nishamani Creek watershed, and stabilize the watershed in general. So I'll discuss the water samples really quickly. The brown water to the left-hand side, this is a grab sample taken this spring, this April during a storm event. And you can see the left-hand side water is much darker and has less clarity than the right-hand side of the water sample. The brown water was taken at the inlet to the creek, and then the clearer water was taken at the outlet below the dam, which is really, I'm using that as a visual aid to show you how sediment moves through the system and drops out of the system. Our goal would be to create a system that has much clearer water entering it to begin with, but also then by the time that water would transport below the Woodburn Road, you know, causeway, or out of that four bay area, that it would already look much cleaner and have more clarity so that in general, the entire lake body water quality could start improving over the years. So we decided, the Conservation District, with the county's participation and the Parks Department, decided to begin this effort. Department, decided to begin this effort to restore the Conservation Pool. But you can't just go and dredge a project or dredge an area like this without working on the area that is draining it, because otherwise, in another nine years, we would have just ended up in the same place, and it would have been seen as a Band-Aid project. So first, we needed to look at the entire upper watershed and study that and see what we could do there so that we could justify a longer-lasting result from a dredge project in the Conservation Pool. So we all know how this pattern goes. Right in the early 90s, the Parks Department and the county became open to the Conservation District, starting to work on county properties, and the municipalities involved were all very welcoming and did their part locating projects. We studied the watershed, we created management plans, we designed and implemented projects, and some of those ideas are listed there for you, and all in the hopes of eventually getting to the point where we've stabilized the watershed enough that we could have this capstone project of restoring the Conservation Pool, which was always our ultimate goal over the last 20 years. Simultaneously, of the Conservation District and the Parks Department and the municipalities all doing their work, the EPA and the DEP were conducting these studies and setting metrics that they call a total maximum daily load. I won't go into the ins and outs of that, but basically, it's a metric that kind of creates a diet for waterways within the Commonwealth. They identify the overwhelming impairment, and they set goals for reductions in those pollutants, if you will. And you can see from our chart that our past projects, once calculated with their nutrient and sediment reductions, did have an impact on what the state set as a required TMDL reduction. So we did have an impact from 2000 to 2016, but because of the legacy sediments that were being stored within the Conservation Pool and then kind of just transmitted into the lake with every storm event, the likelihood of reaching our goal became, you know, it became almost unreachable. But the reductions that we've projected with the estimates and the computer modeling that we've done before applying for the dredge funding, we see that it's estimated that we will not only be able to reach the phosphorus reduction, but triple the reduction needed for phosphorus. So we would be 100% achieving the total maximum daily load goal set by the state and by the EPA for Core Creek for phosphorus, and this single project would account for almost 50% of the needed total suspended solids reduction needed for the project. So I wanted to show you these numbers to highlight the importance of this specific individual project and why we consider it our capstone project. It is a dredge project, we're going to achieve these reductions by removing 14,000 cubic yards of sediment that have been legacy deposited in that waterway and sitting within the waterway for the past 25, 30 years. And not only removing it, but creating a natural habitat, a natural wetlands, a channel with wetland habitat along the side that then will be vegetated, and that will then allow for nutrient cycling. And so all of the phosphorus that comes down will actually hopefully be utilized within that wetland system before hitting the lake. We also are gonna make sure that we are facilitating some easy access for future maintenance, because we do estimate that every 15 to 20 years, at least a smaller area will need to go, be entered into and maintained by the county, but it shouldn't be, let's dredge the entire Conservation Pool again and again. It should just be, let's get some smaller equipment in and remove this potential, you know, natural erosion that's going to continue to happen. And yeah, installing a lot of natural habitat features, I don't know, I'm sure most of you are aware that there's some red-bellied turtle, there's bald eagles, there's lots of wonderful wetland habitat there, and it's really beautiful, it will be a really beautiful area once we conduct the project. So that's me, I'm the history of the project. I've been at the district for long enough to have participated in most of these events and these projects, so I'm going to hand off this presentation to our new watershed specialist, Karen Ogden, who is going to be the future of this project, and she's gonna finish up with how we're gonna get to the end.
So good morning. You know, so how much does it cost, where's the money coming from, and how are we gonna get it done? That's what I'm going to recap here. You'll see, the county, of course, has pledged about $800,000 to this project. The rest of the funding totaling $2.1 million came from grants. And you'll see the grants lined up on top, so we have the Department of Community and Economic Development with $300,000, EPA Section 319 grant for $791,000, and National Fish and Wildlife Foundation came in with $250,000. So there are funding sources. You'll notice the asterisks next to dredging under the county of Bucks. I have that noted because that's going to start in August, so the invoices will be rolling in, so fair warning that you'll be seeing that soon. To this point, we've, in the preparation and with contracting efforts with Princeton Hydro, we've spent about $45,000 under the Section 319 grant, and the county has, we've spent about $2,200. So again, fair warning, that's going to change quickly from August through September. So we can switch names. So the project timeline, we expect to open the floodgates mid-July and start lowering the lake over a period of about two weeks until we get to the water level we need to bring the equipment in in early August. They'll start building their construction access and platform so that the equipment can get in there after we start excavating the sediments. The spoil will be removed from the pool and de-watered on-site for some time before it gets moved to the adjacent farm field where it'll de-water, and we will begin incorporating and grading that sediment into the agricultural field through August, August through October, really. I mean, it's hard, we can't say day one through day 30 exactly what's gonna be happening, but that timeframe is when the equipment will be working. And it'll look messy, that's when people are gonna be driving down Woodburn Road, and they'll see an excavator scooping out the lake and wonder what's going on, so. So September through October, hopefully it'll be winding down well, it'll denobalize, close the gates, let the water level start rising. It must be back to the original level by December 31st to accommodate the bald eagles that start nesting, you'll see that noted. So it's a period before we go into winter, the sediments will have at least an initial cover crop on them to stabilize the soils, because we don't want all that sediment flowing right back down into the creek. So we'll stabilize it, let it sit over winter, and then start up again in April, reworking the sediments into the soil and planting, planting the wetlands, doing tree plantings, habitat enhancement, but next spring, the heavy lifting will be complete. And then, so into the summer, so the eagles are done, we're working again. July through December, it's really, you know, kind of a cleanup, where we're putting in habitat features for basking sea turtles or, you know, roosting platforms, different features for the habitat value, which also increases recreational use, because it's a viewing site for people on kayaks and boats, so there will be a place to paddle around and see what's going on. And you'll see the end will be marked by the farmer planting his spring 2024 crop in that field, and that will be that. Okay, we can get to the next slide, please. I wanted to at least make you aware of the public outreach we're doing, this is really one of them, one of our first public outreach for this summer. We've prepared a frequently asked questions document that is posted on our website, and I'm gonna be working with the local print media to see if we can get small articles posted, just so people know what's going on. We ask that questions be directed to us the best we can. You have the base knowledge now to at least speak to the project, but if someone comes in with detailed difficult questions, send them our way and we'll answer them the best we can. We are holding, in coordination with Parks and Recreation, a public meeting at Core Creek Park, Pavilion 11, next Monday, right, Monday the 6th. You know, the primary users of the lake are probably aware that something's brewing, so we would expect them to come and gather more information at that point. Okay, and one more? Some other things I'd like to note, just because there's a lot of unknowns, you know, it's summer when we're working, things could come up like tropical storms or other events that could, you know, throw a wrench into the works. While it's going on, the public are not, they're not gonna be able to access and use the lake like they're used to. With the drawdown, there are portions of the lake, as you see, kind of can see on the image to the right, the red dotted line is approximately where the drawdown shoreline will be. So if fishermen wants to go past, there may be four or five feet of mud between the grassy bank and the waterline, so people are gonna have to accommodate, look for different spots. There are other places where there's not gonna be a visible change. So there will be that disruption. There's a concern that we may see a harmful algal bloom in the lake, so we'll have lower lake levels, it'll be a big change to the aquatic system in a pretty short period of time. Cyanobacteria can sometimes become a problem if they die, if, you know, have massive die-off and they release toxins into the water. We'll be monitoring that throughout the summer more intensively than we have in years past, just to make sure that if something is going on, we can advise the public to be careful and really wash their hands and don't ingest the water. And I wanted to note that we recently installed some in-stream continuous monitoring systems in Core Creek and at the outflow of the dam. We'll be collecting data every 15 minutes for like the next three to five years to try to demonstrate the effect of this project. So hopefully, I'll be able to come back to you someday and show you new numbers for TMDLs and where we are once this is completed. And I believe that was the last slide, so thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, we're easy to reach at the district.
Okay. Appreciate any questions for? So yeah, a lot of work has gone into this, obviously, as you could tell, not just obviously the slideshow and the presentation, but all the preparatory work and the contracts and everything else, so. But it definitely will look different down there, so. So if people start calling the commissioners or, you know, other elected officials, then I mentioned kind of reaching out to Middletown Township and having a conversation with them, just so people don't go to their meetings and wonder what's happening to the lake. Yeah, so.
What's the county's share outside grant funding? What is what?
The county, it was 784.
784, yeah.
County pledge, $400,000 of that is for contingencies. So again, if that tropical storm comes, or something throws the project off.
What's the application?
Well, we would default on the other grant funding that has been given, and we did wanna specify that the county's funding is going directly for implementation and construction activities, not for consultant fees or anything along those lines. Okay, well, the, yes, our main goal is to reach the TMDL reduction so that our waterways have better water, there's better, more improved water quality, and they're self-sustaining systems, and they're reaching their water quality, so that this, so, not necessarily, but fishable, swimmable, maintain, reaching the designation that the state has set for what they believe that water body should be able to do, and all of our streams should be able to be fishable and swimmable. Lake Luxembourg has been monitored consistently for the last 20 years. There's water clarity, visibility, algae, and harmful algal blooms that occur within the lake. I don't know about the county Parks Department, but the Conservation District gets continuous phone calls asking, when are we gonna do something to improve Lake Luxembourg? So this has been an ongoing effort throughout the county. Well, describe the survey or why it's necessary? So the red-bellied turtle is an endangered species, and was it also for bob turtle habitat? Red-bellied Pennsylvania threatened species. So in order to do any construction project, you have to clear your site and make, or, you know, get clearances of your site for many endangered flora or fauna, and we know that, we've seen them, they're hatching. So we know that the red-bellied turtle is on-site, so we need to find out where they're located, where they're nesting, and then protect them from the construction activities. Just the permitting process require, you know, due diligence for a variety of issues, and threatened nature species is just one of them. And we're also doing, you know, we'll kind of, you know, the fox looking at the henhouse, but we'll be regulating ourselves, watching ourselves for soil erosion, sedimentation problems too. So all the permits have been applied and approved based on that early talk.
Yeah, it's a massive lake, it's a massive project, so I appreciate all the work you're putting into it, and looking forward to seeing it done.
Thank you so much.
Ms. McKebbit, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Ms. McKebbit had a comment?
No, I just wanted to point out that this project's been in the works for, I would say, yeah, a long time. And then Dave, the funding for the county, is it coming from Grown Greener? Grown Greener, right, so.
I also wanna add, as a former Middletown Township Supervisor, when we had the floods in the mid-'90s, after all the engineering studies were done, part of it was blamed on the fact that Lake Luxembourg was overflowing, and there was something happening with water, and they kept saying you need to dredge it, so it's been a long time coming and very necessary.
Thank you, and respectfully, yeah, we wanted, it did take this long to get it, and we are at this point now because we understand the importance of stabilizing that upstream area so that we're not just repeating the same mistake that we, you know, letting it fill in with sediments, and hopefully creating a much more stable and long-lasting system.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, public comment period? All right, so there's nothing for, no comment for any agenda items, so we'll move on, we'll come back to the one person who signed up later on. Minutes from May 18th, 2020, any, or 2022, any corrections or suggestions, questions? Okay, all right. So for today's consent agenda, items one through 12, just highlighting a few things, the county contributing $22,000 for a women's place, $150,000 for truancy prevention, $108,000 for workforce training, welding, and interns mobile lab, $70,000 trail study in Lower Bucks County, $28,000 through housing community development for some residents with disabilities, and about $20,000 coming in to the courts for our mental health court. And just some of the highlights. If there are no comments or questions, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, including the minutes? So moved? All in favor? Aye. Okay. The regular agenda, just one item under the Law Library, and I don't know if Mr. there, Mr. Heckman wants to just talk a little bit about it, just wanted to have this on, it's kind of a big expenditure, and I thought it was interesting, it was a lot of, a lot of work went into this, I appreciate the court staff doing their best to deal with a very difficult situation, talking with the president judge a little earlier, just to give an idea of what the purchase is and some of the, some of the unique problems with this that you guys had to struggle with.
Yes, this contract contains all of the proprietary print materials that is published by West Publishing under Thomson Reuters for both the Law Library, the Court of, come please, the judges, court administration, and the 18 magisterial judges out there. This, this contract is labeled a LMA, as in a library maintenance agreement, which provides cost certainty and some smoothing out of the updates that are published to these publications, you know, based on, you know, law changes, statute changes, that, you know, that can come in at any time and that. So this is a, this particular contract is a five-year contract. This year, this time, we've got it reduced to a, only a 1% increase per year, which is different than the previous shorter periods of time, which cost, which was a 4% or 5% per year increase. It is a significant cost, it does represent the lion's share of the printed material for all those entities that I mentioned. And that, there is in this, this contract is actually less than what we were paying There is in this, this, this contract is actually less than what we're paying now and will be less for each of those five years and that. We did discuss with Thomson Reuters if we eliminated a significant amount of the print material. And their response is the, there's a discount on the amount of, depending on the amount of printed materials that we subscribe to. And what we currently get is an 85% discount on what they estimate as a, as $2 million worth of print material a year. And if we reduced it to the extent that we offered to, that the discount went down to 24% and we ended up would be paying $120,000 more a year for less materials than what we are currently subscribed to.
Yeah, and when you're talking about, you know, not as many print materials, specifically about going more electronic, about more, having more things online?
Right, right.
Yes.
I mean, our online contract is a separate contract. Right now it is with LexisNexis. We went to them four years, three years ago because they were significantly less than Westlaw. They were only a third of the cost and it saved the county over the four-year contract about $200,000, so we went with them. That contract is up next year, coinc, and it coincides with about 12-month period that we have in this written contract, in this printed material contract, which allows us to reevaluate and make a larger shift to electronic materials rather than printed. That takes place 12 months after this contract is in place. And that is the, basically the expiration date of the current online contract that we have.
All right.
So we look forward to that opportunity in 12 months.
Yeah, it's a unique situation where you, you want to buy a little less and they charge you a lot more.
Correct, absolutely.
And it's, yeah, I must mention that Judge Bateman is, part of my job as a department chair was to buy textbooks. And there are only about three textbook companies left in the United States. They've all merged. And so there's, really limits your options and increases the price, so.
This process is really trying, they're still trying to hang on to the printed word that they, they have. And this is the mechanism that they use to do that.
Yeah, well, hopefully we can move more electronic, you know, starting next year. But I appreciate all the work you put into it. Any other questions, Mr. Stare?
What would happen if we said no? And?
We would, we would lose the ability to get those updates for those printed materials that, that are not available online.
So what, I'm just, I guess I'm looking more for the impact on the court system, on for attorneys, for the judges?
Well, we would not have access to the, the latest, you know, statutory information that we need to make the decisions on. And the attorneys that use the law library would not have, would lose that aspect, that that access as well.
Do you know how many attorneys are using the law library?
Not particularly with the attorneys, but we get about 300, 400 people a month.
In the, one over in the courthouse?
Into, in, in both, in both facilities.
Do you know if they're using?
Usually it is more attorneys that come over to the law library because the books are, the main, main section of books are here. So that's a greater proportion of the attorneys coming over here.
Because what I, what I've understood from them is that most of them are using the electronic version over in the courthouse law library, that there's very few that are coming over here. I'm uncomfortable with this and I feel like there's got to be a better alternative and it just seems like an awful lot of money for us to spend that, for very little use.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay. All right, is there a motion then to approve 13 Thomas Reuters West Carroll Stream, Illinois, 1.3 and change?
So moved.
Okay, motion made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, personnel actions. Any comments or questions on personnel actions? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the personnel actions?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
On board appointment to the agricultural land preservation board, Mr. Bartley Millett is filling in for a member who has left the board. His term will go to February 22nd, 2023. Is there a motion to appoint Bartley Millett?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Other civics, Shamrock Grains, $1,500. Is there a motion to approve that expenditure?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Chief Operating Officer, Ms. McKevitt?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a couple of reminders and then a few updates from staff that I'd like to defer some time to if I might. First is there, the application deadline for the third round of Bucks Built Startup Fund investment through John Mercer, the Startup Bucks Group here in Doylestown. They're, they fund early-stage startup companies and the deadline for the application for the Bucks Built Startup Fund is, for their third round, is June 14th. The investments are about 25,000 apiece and it's a cooperation between the county and its industrial development authority and the folks at Startup Bucks. So if you know any companies that are in the early stages, please point them in the direction of John Mercer and the organization of Startup Bucks. Secondly, our Household Hazardous Waste Program has an event on June 25th at the Central Bucks South High School, that's in Moreington Township. And if you go online, you can sign up for, for, to drop off your, your household items there. And then if I might parlay some time to, to Tom Freitag, our Director of Board of Elections, to talk about recount activities for the most recent election.
So most of you probably know, last week, the Acting Secretary of State ordered a mandatory recount for the Republican side for U.S. Senate. Two candidates came within half a percentage point for the overall vote totals for the state, which triggers a mandatory recount unless the other candidate decides they don't want to go through with it. That did not happen, so we're statutorily mandated by today to begin a recount for just that office. We've been started this morning at 9:00 a.m. We have to be finished by law by next Tuesday at noon. We expect, just based on the recount that we had to do similarly last year in November of 2021, to be done most likely by Friday. There's about 153,000 ballots that we have to go through, ballots from the polling places, ballots that came by mail-in, provisional, anything that was counted prior, we have to recount again. We're using, as the statute says, we have to go use different machines than they were previously scanned on. So all of the ballots from the polling places are being scanned on our central scanners. We have two separate models of central scanners, so if they were mail-ins or absentees, we're scanned on one model on Election Day. They're being scanned on the opposite model now. We've rented three additional scanners from our vendor Clear Ballot to be able to get done faster before the deadline. And we will be reimbursed by the state for a portion of the recount. The code gives the number of boxes, boxes being either the ballot boxes or the envelopes that we scanned absentee or mail-in batches into, gives a flat fee of $50 per box. So it should be roughly $50,000 that we're reimbursed for. That does not count, they do not reimburse for any overtime or extra staff or extra equipment. So the county will have to pay for the rentals, but that is lesser than the amount that, that we've gotten reimbursed for. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Questions?
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom. Secondly, if I could ask Audrey Kenny, our Director of Emergency Services, to talk about, give us an update on emergency preparedness in our communities in Bucks County?
Thanks, Margie, appreciate it. We all watched last week as the school shooting incident came to light in Uvalde, Texas, just over a week ago. And some children were victims of one of the deadliest school shootings in our history. In 2022, there've been 27 school shootings so far. We hope that ends today, but we're still working through that and over 200 mass shootings across the country. During incidents like this, it's important for us to step back, look at our own resources and our plans, and make sure that we're familiar with what's available and we know how to get those resources out there quickly as needed. It's important to note that even though we must continue just to work our plans and provide additional support and resources to our services, we do have a strong foundation here in the county that we've been building on. Our first responders train for this kind of incident. It's a collaborative approach between our police, fire, and EMS services, and they address things like scene security, trauma-based care, triage, and provide reunification support as well. That's an important partnership that we have the Bucks County Intermediate Unit for. They provide incredible resources on our behalf as well. A few other resources that we have in the county as well I'd like to talk about, we have a, all schools are required to have emergency plans and school safety plans. The schools and police departments participate in specific training which focuses on active shooters. There are, there is a crisis and emergency communications support team that comes out and they help with messaging to the school community and the media in times of crisis. We have Prepare Crisis and Flight Response Team. That's a team that's made up of counselors, psychologists, social workers, and people who are specifically trained in critical incidents to provide care at times of crisis. Recently, they've been deployed to Quakertown School District after a tragedy occurred there on Christmas morning. And finally, we have our Safe to Save Something program. It's an anonymous tip line that's monitored 24/7. It's a place for students and parents to report threats or things that may affect school safety and having a safe school environment. We would encourage any student or parent to download this app to their smartphone to be able to report incidents that they hear about or rumors that they are hearing as well. That's my update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Audrey, I appreciate that. And then lastly, if I could ask Angie, Angie Nagel to, to address some shortages we have in our park and recreation department?
Sure, thanks, Margie. So, good news first, all of our recreation facilities are open as of June 4th. They're open in, we're doing a phased opening, so they'll be open on the weekend and then as, as students and, and become available during the summer, all of our facilities will be open daily as of June 20th. Those facilities include our two boat rentals, our two pools, Tohican and Oxford Valley, our two tennis centers, and the Oxford Valley Golf Course. I want to mention that we have many opportunities to support our facilities available to not only students, but adults looking for part-time work, retirees, we will, we will take anyone that wants to support our park system. There's two incentives that are new this year. We have an all-access parks pass, so join our team and then you have an all-access pass to any of the rec facilities for the entire summer. We're also offering to certify lifeguards at our cost. So these are two new incentive programs that we hope will draw people to become a parks employee. Finally, I want to mention several ways to stay connected to our park system. There's our, the county website, but there's also three very active social media accounts on Instagram, Twitter, and Facebook, as well as our pathways program guide is now available electronically. So if you missed this round, you can go on the county website, sign up to receive the next round electronically delivered to your inbox. We hope that you are staying connected with our park system and enjoying all the resources that we have to offer you. Thank you.
That was great, thank you, Angie, I appreciate that. Okay, and then lastly, thank you, Commissioners, for approving our next purchasing director. But I would be remiss in not saying once again, thank you to Maureen for sticking around while we went through the vetting process. And I, I will say, I will admittedly say that I probably drug my feet a little bit. You have been a mainstay here for a number of years and your service, dedicated service to county government, not only to its residents, but to its staff, has been remarkable. So we appreciate that. I especially appreciate your willingness to help us transition to the new director, whom you might know. I, and I want to recognize that the next director will be Liz Gates, who is right now serving as the deputy, de, I'm sorry, deputy, I almost called her deputy, to, assistant to the chief operating officer. It's been, it's been a wonderful two years in such a very difficult time, and you have been amazing. You're, it's going to be, you've raised, you've raised the bar for the next person to come in. So I, I just want you to know that your time with me has been awesome. So I wish you luck. Thank you, Maureen, and on to, on to better, on to better days. Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitor's report.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you, Maureen, and congrats to Liz. We begin by noting that the board had its standing executive session yesterday. They conducted that with staff and legal counsel to discuss collective bargaining negotiations, to discuss updates and potential settlement of pending litigation, as well as personnel and employment matters. Second, I was asked by our, our Deputy COO and Chief Clerk, Gail Humphrey, just to piggyback on Mr. Freitag's comments about the election. A lot of folks may have heard in the news that there's a lot of litigation concerning the election. And here in Bucks this year, that's actually all being overseen from a litigation standpoint by our first assistant county solicitor, Amy Fitzpatrick, who was in Harrisburg yesterday for argument on one of those matters. So just at a high level, what's going on right now is one of the, those campaigns in the Senate primary, the McCormick campaign filed lawsuits against dozens of counties in Pennsylvania. The essence of those challenges were Pennsylvania's requirement that voters who send in mail-in or absentee or overseas ballots provide a signature. And so there was a request to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court to exercise their original jurisdiction. They declined to do that. That's called a king's bench petition. But the Commonwealth Court is where a lot of those cases then would otherwise start. And so that's where Ms. Fitzpatrick and other attorneys for counties across Pennsylvania were making argument. So that litigation is playing out separately. Folks may have heard about, not in state court, but in federal court, litigation that started, you know, in our neighboring county, in Lehigh County, a dispute about the 2021 election. And there, the issue concerned the dating requirement on those same kinds of ballots, overseas, military, and absentee. And the appeals court for the region that covers Pennsylvania and New Jersey, it's the Third Circuit, had issued a ruling saying that the dating requirement was invalid. And just last night, this, the U.S. Supreme Court assigns a justice to cover each of these circuits. The only member on the Supreme Court that started in the Third Circuit is Justice Alito, and so he's overseeing the Third Circuit. He has the power to issue a temporary stay, meaning that that opinion isn't really controlling right now until the U.S. Supreme Court decides whether to take that case. So lots going on in the meantime. Everyone heard from Mr. Freitag that the board is, is doing its job to the letter of the law. Finally, I'll share that our Consumer Protection Department continues to receive consumer complaints about used car sales. It's always one of their top issues that they receive complaints about. Recently, there's been an uptick in complaints from non-native English speakers who have been alleging deceptive business practices from a very small group of businesses. So the department wants everyone to know that they have any concerns or English, excuse me, any concerns or issues, they can contact Consumer Protection, 1-800-942-2669. Email is consumerprotection@buckscounty.org. On Twitter, they're at bucks, at bucksconsumer, and they'll do, do their very best to make sure that everyone has access to the full services of their department. And that concludes my, concludes our report.
Thank you. Okay, move to public comment. Chris Keely, right? Kylie, I'm sorry. You have to come up to the microphone here, sorry.
Hello.
Hi.
I just wanted to speak about the mail-in drop boxes. And I would like, or request, a lot of people in the county I know are not happy with the mail-in.
I just wanted to speak about the mail-in drop boxes. And I would like, or request, a lot of people in the county I know are not happy with mail-in drop boxes. They're a recipe for fraud. And Bucks County actually was canvassed. I'm not sure if you're aware of the canvassing results?
No, I'm not, no, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Okay, I'm just going to go over a few. This is from the 2020 election. And it still hasn't been addressed. So there were one hundred and eighty-one addresses attempted. Sixty-eight point eight-nine percent of those addresses had registration count discrepancies. Fifty-four point four percent had phantom registrations. Thirteen point four percent were missing registrations. Fifty-four percent had vote count discrepancies. Twenty-nine point two percent had phantom votes. Twenty-four point seven-two percent showed missing votes. So that's just a small.
Could you tell us where your data comes from?
Pardon me?
Could you tell us where your data came from?
Audit the vote, PI. So that's just a small sample in one county. It's, it's a problem. And it needs to be addressed. So I'm just here to, you know, make you aware. I don't know if you're aware of the movie 2000 Mules that just came out recently. It basically spoke about the mail-in drop boxes and the fraud that goes on.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. That was the only person who signed up for public comment. Just as a, as a reminder, there were two instances of fraud which were discovered in Bucks County. That was discovered by our Board of Election staff, turned over to the district attorney, who filed charges against those two individuals who tried to vote using mail-in ballots in the names of their deceased mothers. They were caught at the very beginning part of the process, which is exactly how the system's supposed to work. In fact, this county was sued eleven times in, after the 2020 election. And every single lawsuit was dismissed thanks to the legal staff and the Board of Election staff we have doing their jobs. In fact, in one of those cases, the attorney for the Trump campaign had to admit in public, in a court, that he had no evidence of fraud in Bucks County. So drop boxes are new to Pennsylvania. They are not new to the country. They're used everywhere, in most states, including very, very red states like Utah and, and blue states as well. They've been used for a very long time. And so I applaud the efforts of our staff here to make sure they did their jobs properly. There was an audit of Bucks County elections, an actual audit done by the state, which found that there was not any kind of fraud that we could find, so.
I would just add that you have to be very careful at information that you might read or hear about or look at because it is not, most of the time, it might not be accurate. And as the Commissioner said, we did a thorough investigation of everything and I don't know where that's coming from. So thank you.
Okay. All right, Commissioner's comments. Commissioner D'Arlo?
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to have a few comments about what we celebrated on Monday and over the weekend, Memorial Day. I remember as a young boy growing up, and we didn't actually call it Memorial Day, we called it Decoration Day. And I think at, at some point, the federal government actually changed, changed the name. And the Decoration Day, I believe, goes back to the very beginning after the Civil War, when we first started celebrating the holiday, when the people from the towns, mainly the women and children, would go out and decorate the graves of the Civil War fallen soldiers. And that's how it got the name Decoration Day. And I'll tell you, watching our county celebrate, I don't know if celebrates the right word to use, but the memorial, remembering the men and women all over the county who died protecting our country through the years, protecting our freedom, protecting our democracy, protecting our way of life, that all of us enjoy in this country. And I'll tell you, it was really inspiring. I mean, so many communities had parades or services. And I know a lot of the churches did as well. I attended one at my church at St. Ephraim's, where it was not just about the fallen, the men and women who had died, but also about recognizing our veterans. And we had a service and it was, again, very, very inspiring. So I, I just want to thank everybody all over Bucks County. I know we had a parade in Benz Allen, which I participated in. And I don't know how many people were there at the parade route. I know it was in the thousands, not the hundreds. And, you know, we went through two years of COVID and I think the ceremonies were kind of like, you know, not as great as they happened. But this year, it was, again, very, very inspiring for me to watch all over the county. We had a, we had a memorial celebration here at the courthouse on Friday. So it was just not Monday, it was Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday that these ceremonies went on around the county. And, and again, it was just so very, very inspiring. I want to thank everybody who participated and thank all the municipalities and boroughs and the county for all the work that they do to make it happen. And finally, I just want to echo the words from Margie about, Maureen, thank you for your good work. I know you're going to be around for a little bit, training our new director. God bless you. But thank you really for your good work. And to the new director that's here in the back, Liz Gates, and as Margie said, she was the, she was the, I guess, Secretary to the COO, but boy, she was a lot more than that. She really was. I mean, it gets pretty chaotic sometimes up on that fifth floor. And she just did, I think Margie used the word, amazing job in making sure everything ran smoothly, whether it was a Zoom meeting or the hundred other things that we, we have to do up there. She was terrific. And me and Liz, I don't know if you all know, we had a little competition about who would get there in the morning first. And I can tell you, I won a lot more times than she did. So, so Liz, thank you. We're just going to miss you so much up there on the fifth floor. But, you know, I used the word bittersweet. We're sorry to see you go, but we're, we're all very, very happy. And all the best, success in your new position that you're moving into. But we really are, we're really going to miss you. Thank you.
Ms. Marcy?
Just a quick shout out of thanks to our Director of Corrections and the Department of Corrections. They recently had an inspection and I know that it was a ton of work to get ready for. And you did very well. And I know it's difficult times in corrections right now. So thank you and thank your staff.
Yeah, not a whole lot to add. Just echo Commissioner D'Arlo's comments, thanking all of the organizations, VFWs, American Legion posts, municipalities, police departments, fire departments, who had a hand, and all the volunteers who had a hand in all of the celebrations, the parades, memorial services that happened over this past weekend. And I was mentioning at a couple of the places I was at that it was an interesting Memorial Day because last Monday, the Monday before Memorial Day, this county had a chance to properly recognize and bury one of its own, an Army private named Walter Wildman, from, born and raised in Bristol Borough, who was killed in action in November nineteen forty-four in the Hurtgen Forest in Germany. And his body was not positively identified. It was buried in the Netherlands in an American cemetery. But for decades, there was suspicion as to who this person was. And just really in the last few years, the Department of the Army continuing its ongoing efforts to identify remains of American service members around the world, used DNA technology and positively identified Private Wildman and brought his body back to Bucks County for the first time in almost eighty years. And he was buried at Washington Crossing Cemetery. And so it was nice to see, was, there was, you know, some local veterans out. There were, it was covered by the media, which I thought was, was great. You know, I had the honor of being there, just representing the county. Bristol Borough had a few representatives there, representing the borough. One of the saddest parts, I think, was that Mr. Wildman's family from Bucks County has passed on or moved away. And so, you know, here was, here was a serviceman who, you know, answered the call of his country, went to Europe to fight fascism and protect democracy, lost his life, and then lay anonymous for almost eighty years. And when he came home, you know, his, how many of his family members who never knew exactly what happened to him. There was one distant cousin who had heard about it. He lived in Atlantic City and he just happened to drive up just because he wanted to be there. And he ended up getting, it was giving a lot of attention from the media and from the Department of the Army and others who were there, which he completely did not anticipate. But, but it was, I think, kind of the point of Memorial Day in many ways is not, you know, it's remembering those who, who have passed on, but especially thinking about those whose stories didn't get an ending and who, how many of their families and how many of their friends have passed on and never knew the ending. And Private Wildman finally got his ending and it was here in Bucks County. So it was, it was that in my mind throughout this week and over the weekend. So I'll thank our staff for all the work they do. I'll echo the comments, thanking Maureen McElveen for all the work she's put in over the decades. And I will congratulate Ms. Gates. She's going back to purchasing. You know, she was there for a little while and learned the ropes. And now she's got to, you know, we kind of, you know, undid a lot of that and now she's got to go back and, you know, learn how to, how to be more disciplined, I think, now than she was, you know. But we certainly will miss her on our part of the fifth floor. You're going to have to buzz yourself in. You're not, we're not going to give you a card. But I want to, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.